Whoops, it's muted. No, I'm sorry. We're gonna get the meeting started. We have four trustees available. The other ones can join us as we begin. Carrie, are you there?
Hold on, I am here.
Okay. All right, well, I gotta, you know, read the customary statement. "We welcome all to this Village Vern Hills Virtual Board Meeting. We have gone to this virtual meeting format to maintain social distance in accordance with public health best practices. Attendees would be able to listen and watch this meeting, however chat and other features of Zoom platform are disabled. Attendees have been instructed to provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to social@villahills.org. Input received by 6:45 will be shared with the board during the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Input provided after 6:45 will be shared with the board after the conclusion of the meeting. As with all Village meetings, a copy of the meeting will be posted on the Village YouTube channel. So, thank you for your interest in participation." All right. This is... What's that? Oh, do this before, you know, turn it forward. Okay. I see Dr. Appenheim's here and...
I'm here, thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I wanna call the meeting to order and everybody, gotta take a roll call again? No?
Yeah.
Is any...
Yeah, we haven't done a roll call for the actual board meeting, have we?
No, we haven't yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
You need to do...
Let's call the, I'll call the meeting order, roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Markwart. Trustee Brown.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Appenheim.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the United States.
One nation under...
...liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Mr. President, just for the record, Trustee Markwart called to say that he was running late and would join us when he could.
Yeah.
And Trustee Takaoka is traveling and he was going to try and get him as well.
I'm here.
Craig's here.
And he just showed up.
Mike texted me, he said he won't be at the meeting.
Okay, I have a... There's no citizens that are gonna address the board. We didn't get any emails, so... But I do want to make a statement. Good evening. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge all that are facing as individuals, as a community, and as a nation. As we noted before our last meeting, the death of George Floyd and others both before and after him is tragic and unacceptable. As we observe Pride Month, we also recognize that the LGBTQ community continues to face discrimination. You know, there was a Supreme Court decision that was favorable to that group, which is good. As individuals, as a community, and as a nation, we can be better and do better. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Vern Hills community for creating a passionate, peaceful assembly where persons were able to express frustration and anger and a desire for government to be better. This is a moment for us to listen and learn from each other. Many of us have undoubtedly become more aware of how race systems, systemic discrimination and equality impact the lives of our friends, neighbors, and our families. I encourage all of us to build on that awareness and continue to examine ourselves and our systems to make sure we are inclusive and support everyone. With regard to police misconduct, conduct, we have witnessed, we are deeply concerned. As the president and Village Board, we are hurt and upset by the actions we have seen from across the nation by some of those who are employed as police officers. Every member of our community should be concerned when we witness those who have taken an oath and are sworn to protect us. Ignore the rights of the individuals and the communities they serve. Over the past couple of weeks, the trustees and I have received many calls and messages about police reform and accountability. We are listening. We also have received messages of appreciation and support from members of Vern Hills Police Department, which we noted and shared as well. Every officer at Vern Hills Police Department has sworn in and expected to serve all members of the community and look out for the safety and welfare of all who live, work, or visit Vern Hills. I believe we have good people serving here who believe in their mission statement and values, but now I expect members of the Police Department to believe in the principles of being of community and for community. We expect nothing less. And if our police officers continue to serve with honor and respect for everyone, they will continue to have the support of this community. We have all reflected on what has been occurring both nationally and regionally. I hope members of the Police Department also took this opportunity to reflect on what has been occurring across our nation and understand community expectations. I'd like to turn this over to Chief Kreese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate those comments. I too want to thank the community for the responsible manner in which people have expressed their concerns, disgust, anger, and demands. I share much of that frustration. I do not know of a single police officer who saw what happened in Minneapolis as anything other than unwarranted criminal homicide. No one hates a bad cop more than good cops. There are those in our service who have no business wearing a badge and gun. When I took the oath of office as chief, I also recited the law enforcement oath of honor, including a key promise to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. This is needed now as much as ever. Our profession's problems are not limited to a few bad cops. I'm also troubled by those who hesitate to hold others in our calling accountable. This part of our culture has to change. I also want to thank the community for their patience recently when we had to take extraordinary measures due to threats from roving bands of criminal looters. I know many businesses and customers were inconvenienced by the necessary safeguards. The long days at the ready by our men and women in blue ensuring our community was safe stand as a poignant reminder of their commitment to keeping the peace. Almost 200 years ago, Sir Robert Peel, who's known as the father of modern policing, summed up his theory of what's now called consent policing. "The police are the public and the public are the police." This simple phrase reminds the police that we are here for the community, and it's our duty to give society the type of policing they want. Such basic tenet requires police leaders in particular to listen to all voices and accept that improvement is needed. You have my commitment that we are listening and are committed to evolving in order to meet our community's high expectations. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I do. I'm, Chief Kreese, I know you'd responded to an email from a citizen regarding what steps our Police Department has taken, and you'd mentioned the organization that the department is part of in terms of the policy statements that you abide by. And I was wondering if there's a way to make some of that a bit more public so people know kind of where our Police Department stands and some of the good things that we do and the policies that we abide by.
Of course. And if folks go to our webpage, first and foremost, they can see a number of important documents and not just our mission statement or values, but our signed, shared principles, a document that was agreed upon a few years ago between a collaboration between the Illinois Chiefs of Police and the Illinois Chapter of the NAACP. Are, there's several other things, and what you mentioned was Lexipol. Lexipol is a national risk management program, basically, we subscribe to, but it's more than that. It's, it provides us very up-to-date policies and procedures that we use as our template, as our baseline, and we get regular updates from them. And then importantly, they also push out what we call daily training bulletins as a helpful training tool and in addition to the other training we do. So, I think, and you know, we've been involved in Lexipol now for, it's been well over a year. It's a process to get all of our policies up to date, but I can tell you, several of them have needed multiple updates on, one on top of another, because sometimes things just change so quickly. So, it gives me some confidence that we have a broader sense of what's going on in the nation and that mistakes or lessons learned in another part of the country are not lost on us, and we're sure to incorporate that in our policies.
So, would the policy to have no chokeholds be part of the Lexipol program?
It is. In fact, one of the benefits is, for instance, our prohibition on chokeholds somewhat predated but was legislated a few years ago by Illinois state law. As soon as that happened, Lexipol pushed out an updated policy for those departments that didn't already incorporate that. And the nice thing is those policy statements even have a citation, whether it's a legislative law passed by, passed by our electors, or if it's a court decision. Many, many obviously provisions that address policing are United States or Illinois Supreme Court decisions that then mandate and dictate policy updates. And so, we trust, we have, we actually pay for, you know, a company to help make sure that those legal updates are pushed out to us immediately and that we can keep our policies up to date. So, yes, chokeholds have been banned by policy for a long time, but by law in Illinois for several years.
How about, how about an obligation to intercede if, if someone in the police force sees another police officer doing something they object to?
Thank you. It is, it is in fact, if I'm recalling correctly, it's one of the very first things in our policy, certainly on the first page of our policy on using force, police officers' use of force, and affirmative duty to intervene on any other police officer who they observe using excessive force.
Great. Thank you.
Village Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've just got a couple short announcements. First of all is, the next scheduled board meeting is July 7th. The board meets the first and third Tuesday of every month, and June has five Tuesdays. So, the first Tuesday in July will be July 7th. Also, just letting the board and the public know that just prior to the meeting, Mayor Byrne signed the extension of the declaration, the emergency declaration, which will remain in effect until the next scheduled board meeting, which will be July 7th. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that the state of Illinois is on track to go to Phase Four next Friday, June 26th, and that will allow up to gatherings of up to 50 people. And my question to the board is, are you interested in resuming in-person board meetings at that time, or do you prefer to stay on the Zoom platform?
I say go real time, but that would be my vote.
Even though it's 50 people, isn't there still the obligation to be six feet apart? Or...
Yeah, so we could accommodate that by having board members sit at every other seat up on the dais, and staff could be, could be seated out in the public and step up to the presentation altar when necessary. Public could be seated every other seat in the, in the gallery, which we'd be able to maintain that social distance, should we have that many people attend.
Well, so long as we're following the guidelines recommended by the medical people, and Dr. Appenheim is, you know, you're gonna be my go-to guy on this as to whether we're doing it right, then I'm fine with meeting, you know, in a regular meeting.
Will we have to wear masks?
I haven't looked at Phase Four, but that might still be...
That might still be the case, but I'm not sure. Just like in restaurants, you're allowed to take them off to eat, you may be allowed to remove them to speak as well at the podium, because you present very little risk to anyone
Well, we can clarify that further, right?
Yeah, if we have to wear masks, I'd prefer staying on Zoom. But if we don't have to wear masks, then I don't have a problem gathering once again at Village Hall. So, masks is the issue for me.
Okay, and I think the Village Attorney has said that if we are unable to maintain the six-foot social distance, then masks would be required. Otherwise, probably not. Generally speaking, what happens is two or three days prior to the 26th, the governor issues new guidelines, because the ones that are, that have been published were published several months ago and are just that, guidelines. And then usually, he refines those guidelines with additional requirements. When those become available, we can certainly get them out to you and pull the board. We have plenty of time to make this decision. I just want to make sure everyone feels comfortable if we move back into a public setting.
Okay, well, we, like you said, we got some time to, you know, to cogitate all this, so is that okay with the rest of the board? Maybe we will go back to just regular board meetings, but, you know, we have to make sure we can, and that we don't wear masks. That's what it sounds like, right?
Be correct.
Yeah.
Sure.
Problem with the mask, I've kinda gotten used to it and stuff.
I hate it. I can't breathe, it's hard to breathe.
I'm with Carrie on this one.
It's just the worst.
Okay, well, we'll obviously get updated on this as we approach the, you know, Phase Four reopening, so, okay. Is there a motion to, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the annual's vote agenda? A, B, C, D?
So may.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull Item B.
The first agrees.
Okay, this is the second?
I don't think we had a second.
A second. And I agree.
Okay. All right, so this, this motion is to approve Items A, C, and D.
Correct.
First and second agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Okay, motion carries. Item B is approval of voucher list, the bill's dated June 16th, 2020, in the amount of $1,374,433.33.
Mr. President, there's a 10-cent error in the dollar amount, and the motion should read $1,374,433.43, not 33.
Okay. Motion to approve as put forward by the Scrivener.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Okay, motion carries. Unfinished additional business? New business communication? Is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting, go to committee at all?
So may. Second.
Motion is second. Those that are in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and nays. The ayes have it, the board meeting's adjourned. Next is the committee at a hall, approval of the committee at a hall meeting minutes of May 19th, 2020. Their motion to approve.
So may.
Second.
Motion is second, comments, questions, any deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart. Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, for, the second item is South Lake Industrial Center, the Darling Farm. Considering, and this is a director, building director, Mike Atkinson. I'm gonna take this one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would be a consideration of a report and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of a special use permit, authorizing a PUD that would be for light industrial development, also approval of zoning and sign variations, approval of site landscaping, architectural plans, and finally, approval of a plat of subdivision. This property is, is what is commonly known as the Darling Farm. It has remained vacant for a very long time, and as the board is aware, this property is located west of Milwaukee Avenue, behind Lifetime Fitness, and south of Corporate Woods Parkway. The development includes two petitions. The first is the Darling Farm Development itself, and that would be the approvals that I had just stated for you. The second is for the property adjacent to the south. It requires a parking lot setback variation that is triggered from the construction of a new right-of-way, and I'll explain details of that variation request for petition number two a little later on. Again, shown on the screen in front of you is the proposed site plan. This is a 60-acre site that would be subdivided into four lots with one building on each of those lots. There would be three additional lots that would be subdivided to accommodate stormwater detention facilities, and you can see those, one to the west, and then two other ones to the east of the building locations. The four buildings would be designed and constructed to accommodate current market trends for industrial users. This would include distribution, e-commerce, and light manufacturing. These uses would comply with the current zoning regulations for this property, which is BP Business Park District. The proposal is also consistent with the Milanofei Report, which encouraged these type of uses for the property, and that report was reviewed with the board a little over a year ago now. As stated, there would be a new north-south right-of-way that would connect the development north to Corporate Woods and south to Forest Edge Drive. This new right-of-way would provide access to signalized intersections at two locations on Milwaukee Avenue and one unsignalized intersection at Route 45. The south connection at Forest Edge Drive would be located within 10 feet of an existing parking lot on the property to the west. A 50-foot setback is required when a parking lot is adjacent to the right-of-way within Corporate Woods, and this property is located within Corporate Woods. Thus, the variation is required, and this is what is being requested as part of petition number two. Mike, the next slide, please. This one shows the proposed landscape plan. There's an extensive amount of landscaping and trees and plantings that are proposed. This has been very thoroughly reviewed by engineering staff. I would note that there are existing mature trees on the east side of the property that would be saved, and that would be adjacent to that large pond to the right on your screen. Mike, the next slide, please. This one, this screen shows the architectural elevations. It's a little hard to read on this print. Also shows the sign to the bottom of the page. Each sign would display two tenants, and these signs would be located to serve each of the four properties. The next slide, which is a color rendering, does a much better job of showing what these buildings would look like. All the buildings would be similar in design utilizing precast tilt-up panels, which is typical construction for this type of use. There would be full-height glass curtain walls that would be made part of the main entrances. You can see it at the corner of the building on this rendering, and there'd be glass punch-out windows that would serve the office uses. The design will also meet current market requirements, which include taller ceiling heights, multiple exterior docks, large onsite truck maneuvering, adequate vehicle parking, and wider interior column spacing along with a uniform rectangular footprint. These are the trends that John Milanofei helped us understand that are driving this market and led to his recommendation for this type of use for this site, amongst other factors, of course. Each of these buildings could accommodate one single user or multiple tenants. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on May 27th to consider the request and the list of approvals as outlined previously, and these approvals are also further delineated in your packet. At that hearing, the commission was generally supportive of the site plan, but they were not supportive of the gazebo, which, Mike, if, there it is. That's what the gazebo would look like, and if you can go back to slide number one, Mike. That is proposed, it looks like a small white circle up at the top of your screen, just north of the large detention pond at the intersection of Darling Drive and Corporate Woods. That's where it would be located. As a reminder, there's a couple of comments at the time of concept presentation, when the developer was before the board, where it was suggested maybe the developers should consider an amenity in the area of the detention pond. That's what put forth the gazebo, but the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was, was that the gazebo should be eliminated from the development, and that has been included as condition number six of their report and recommendation attached to your packet. Regarding the parking, the commission was, Mike, if you can go back to slide number one, please. Regarding the parking, the commission was comfortable that parking counts are adequate to support the development, and this was based on the parking study that was presented at the night of the hearing. Regarding the landscaping, the commission commented that existing mature trees should be preserved along the west property line of Lot 4 and the south property line of Lot C. These are the two property lines shown on your screen, left lower corner, adjacent to a residential use, that is the oaks. They wanted every effort to be made to preserve existing trees, and if they could not be preserved, that new trees and landscaping be installed that effectively screens the residential use from the light industrial use. And... Uh, and that condition, uh, is contained in item number seven of the report recommendation. Regarding the plat of subdivision, uh, the commission members commented that an ingress egress should be provided along the south of, uh, properties one, two, and three. Those are the top three buildings. There was already an easement on the north side of those buildings. The commission felt those properties would be better served if there was also a secondary access from the south. So that has been included as condition number eight, uh, in their recommendation. Uh, the commission was, uh, generally supportive of the request, uh, for, uh, the sign variations. Again, that would allow, uh, two tenant panels rather than one. So, to summarize their recommendation, first of all, regarding petition number one, the Darling Farm Development. The commission voted seven in favor and zero against to recommend approval of a special use permit, authorizing a PUD allowing the construction of the light industrial development, commonly known, uh, as the Darling Farm, and in the future to be known as South Lake Industrial Center. Number two, the commission voted seven in favor and zero against, uh, to recommend approval of certain variations related to the zoning code. Uh, that would be parking variations and also building coverage. They'd have a building coverage of point three-four rather than point three-oh. Uh, this compares to the building coverage limitation in Corporate Woods of point five-oh. Uh, again, seven in favor and zero against to recommend approval, uh, of the zoning, of the zoning variations and the site code variations that I previously outlined. Number three, the commission voted seven in favor and zero against to recommend approval of preliminary and final site and landscape approvals. Number four, the commission voted seven in favor and zero against to recommend approval of preliminary and final approval of the architectural elevations. And lastly, on a vote of seven in favor and zero against, the commission recommended approval of the plat of subdivision, which includes, uh, a total of seven lots and a plat of dedication for the public right-of-way. Regarding petition number two, uh, that was a setback variation for the lot to the south, that being nine ninety-eight Forest Edge Drive. The commission voted with seven in favor and zero against, uh, to recommend approval of the variation to allow a landscape buffer of 10 feet between the right-of-way and the parking lot, rather than the minimum required setback of 50 feet. And all of these are subject to the conditions of approval, uh, that are outlined in your packet. So for tonight, if the board concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve, uh, number one, the Darling Farm Development, that being petition number two, uh, and the variations for the adjacent lots of the south, that being petition number two, uh, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving both petitions, subject to the conditions, again, that are outlined in your packet, and the petitioner is present, uh, to answer any questions that you may have.
Does, does staff have any, uh, questions right now? Dave Brown, do you?
Um, I, I think overall, as far as this project, it's, um, their engineer and their team, they've assembled a really good team. Uh, we're, we're working through issues. I don't have any outstanding engineering items other than, uh, just things we need to work through as part of a site permit, should this project be approved. There was one thing that staff was looking for clarification was, uh, there was a earlier discussion during the concept presentation, um, whether or not the, uh, how the sidewalk would be addressed. They have added the sidewalk as, uh, they had put up on the screen, along one side of the new north-south roadway. Uh, it will get people to the gazebo. We weren't certain whether the board desired for it to be connected to Milwaukee Avenue or not. Um, whatever your wish is, either way, uh, we just wanted some clarity as we go through, uh, the permitting process, should this be approved. Maybe if Storto could put up the, uh, the, the.
Slide number one.
Thank you. So you can see the sidewalks on the west side. Uh, they have their detention pond. The gazebo is immediately at the southeast corner of the new roadway and Corporate Woods. Um, it will get people within their, uh, development to the gazebo. We think they've done a good job, uh, with the gazebo and, uh, having that as a focal point. Uh, the question at the concept level, and it's been in one of, uh, our reviews, was whether or not the sidewalk should be extended to Milwaukee Avenue, um, or not. And that's really the question.
Well, I thought the gazebo was out based on the, uh, planning and zoning.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's quite, I mean, it's kind of remote to the whole piece of property.
Well, why, why did they vote it out? Why did they request that the gazebo be pulled that they considered an attractive nuisance?
Yeah, they thought that. Uh, they thought, uh, they questioned how much it would really be used. Uh, they questioned its location relative to the location of all the other buildings.
Yeah.
Um, they just generally, they didn't, uh, think it needed to be part of the development.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, the gazebo itself is fine, but if they build it with, you know, the barbecue station and the fire pit and the refrigerator, now I can see it becoming an attractive nuisance. So, uh, from that standpoint, but just having a, an outdoor space, I didn't think it was all that bad, but I'm not married to it, so I'm good with it.
Well, is there, is there a fence that he actually, uh, would be erected?
No, uh, no, sir, that, I, I see the fence in the picture, but I think it's just happens to be, but it's, there's no fence that's part of the, uh, proposed development, at least not, not right now.
And the actual proposal, did that include originally the, the fireplace and et cetera? Or is that just happened to be in the picture? They were just showing how the, uh, covered space would look.
Uh, I'll let the petitioner answer that.
This is the petitioner.
Maybe, maybe he needs to unmute.
Yeah, Brett, you need to unmute.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you are.
Oh.
Okay.
It's not Brett, yeah.
Hey, I'm, uh, John Bagliari. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, really, the, uh, gazebo, uh, was just the structure itself, not the fireplace and the refrigerator and all the rest. It was just, we, we thought that was the nicest structure we found, uh, picture-wise, so we used that, but not, not the fence and not the other things that go along with it.
Okay.
But I think the plant commission had a concern of, you know, kids showing up there at night, hanging around, you know, things like that after dark. That was, seemed to be their concern.
So the attractive nuisance concern.
Right.
Um, in that area, what, what's the plan for the, uh, land that frontages Milwaukee Avenue?
You know, uh, we're, we're, we're in the no-plan plan right now. We're, uh, you know, that's, uh, probably going to be a different type of use. You know, certainly won't be an industrial use. Um, you know, open for suggestion. We would sell it to, you know, whatever kind of use you guys were comfortable with. There was a, uh, townhouse developer talking to us who was, I think, undercatered with the site to the south of us, the, uh, the Forge property. And they were, you know, talking about combining our site with their site. There's quite a bit of wetlands over there. In that five-acre piece, there's probably more than half of it's wetlands, so tough to develop it. But the area along 21, um, seemed to be a little dry, so you, you definitely could do something with it. But, you know, we're kind of following your guys' lead on what you want to see there and, you know, let some other developer handle that.
Is, uh, the detention basin there, does that handle that space without any additional detention?
Um, the detention is specifically for the, uh, the development as proposed. It does not, uh, provide detention for, uh, the Forge Club and the parcels to the north and connecting to Corporate Woods. In terms of, uh, potential development there, uh, the wetlands are low, lowest of quality. And, uh, that is something that they could go through the process and acquire wetland bank credits and have it removed from a regulatory perspective. It takes more time than anything, um, but it is feasible to accomplish that.
The, uh, the only other issue I kind of had, and it's really not an issue per se, but, um, so we're, the closest dock on building A is about 300 feet, I guess, give or take, from the backside of the Oaks. Uh, if, um, the buildings were flipped, uh, so that the, uh, shared, uh, dock, uh, space would be, uh, between A and B, that would push the docks further away from the residential area of the Oaks. Um, that's kind of the only thought I had. Other than that, uh, this is the kind of space I used to build, so I'm assuming they're 32-foot clear.
That's correct. And, you know, one thing we did do, we did flip building D, the building, the big building to the south of that. Initially, we had the docks facing south, uh, towards the residential, towards the other users on Forest Edge Drive. And, uh, Dave and Mike, uh, quickly told us to flip that building around, so we ended up putting the docks on the north side of building D, just for that very fact to get it away from, uh, any neighbors.
Residential, yeah.
Right. And then we did end up putting a detention pond just north of the residential to make that more of a buffer between our properties. So we were cognizant of the residential there.
I, I guess as you're going through the, the permitting process, maybe just think about it one more time about mirroring what you've got between A, B, and C there, so that the docks are even further away from the residential. That's the only thought I have.
So are you suggesting, uh, moving the dock from the west side of A to the east side of A?
Yes, sir. But then if you did that, you'd probably want to take the B building and move that from the east side to the west side, so that you've got that one large, uh, shared truck space. And then building C would be the unique one.
Why, why is that better? Just because C is smaller?
No, I, no, all I'm trying to do is get the docks further away from the Oaks.
Right, but I'm saying if you just move the, move it from the west of A to the east of A, does it really matter if you flip B?
Be, leave B and C alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, but abs- absolutely. The only thing is, um, you like to have that, um, spacious. So the, the whole building would then get closer to, uh, the, uh, the west property line if you didn't do that flip-flop.
Right. And that, and that's why we didn't do that, because we wanted to stay further from the property line. You know, when you flip that building A around, now your building moves, you know.
Yeah, because you need the truck maneuvering space.
Yep.
And where's ZF Industries? Further?
They're right there to the west of building A, that immediate use to the west of there, north of the apartments.
Okay.
So that, that's obviously docking and trucking, you know, right next door, kind of why we thought that was okay.
Yeah, no, it's, agreed. I'm not, their, their use isn't as, as intense as what could be in A, but like I said, I'm, I'm good with the layout as is. It's your typical light industrial.
Right, we, we are too. We think it's a really great site plan, you know, getting those two access points, you know, one off of Corporate Woods and one off of Forest Edge Drive were very critical. Instead of just one access point to the park, we've got two, and that's a publicly dedicated right-of-way Darling Drive. So we think it's a great free-flowing site plan. Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board members?
This is all, um, the tax money from this all goes to, uh, 103 Lincolnshire and 125 Stevenson, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to direct staff to prepare, uh, the next steps, I guess, uh, towards, uh, having, uh, next level approvals.
Uh, may I read off those approvals for the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it'd be, uh, a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving a special use permit, authorizing a planned unit development, allowing the construction of a light industrial center to be known as South Lake Industrial Center. Number two, approval of certain, uh, variations related to the sign and zoning ordinance. Number three, approval of preliminary and final site plan and landscaping. Uh, number four, approval, uh, of final architectural plans. And then finally, approval of, uh, preliminary and final plats of subdivision, which include a plat of dedication for the Darling Farm right-of-way. All subject to the conditions, uh, that are contained in the report and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission that are outlined in your packet.
So you want us to do the variance on a separate?
You can, if you wish.
Counsel?
Well, I mean, the nine ninety-eight, uh, Forest Edge Drive.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, uh, uh, thank you, Commissioner Cook. What I just outlined for you were the approvals for petition number one.
Okay.
It's all moved separately correctly.
Okay, so there's a, a first and a second. Liz?
Second.
Your, your mic's not on, Liz.
I read her lips.
I got it.
All right, well, we got, all right, so we're ready for a roll call on petition one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. First petition, motion passes.
Petition number two, staff is looking for a recommendation to prepare an ordinance, uh, for two, uh, pursuant to section G1 exhibit F of ordinance 544, and also referenced by ordinance 545, approving a variation to allow, uh, allow a landscape buffer that is 10 feet in depth, rather than the minimum required depth of 50 feet. Uh, again, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet.
So moved.
Sir's second.
Second.
Can I ask before we vote, where, where's this 10 feet on the, on the picture again?
Mike, can you put up that second? I think there's a second slide that I can, we can get up there for you, trustee Oppenheim. All right, if you look on this, okay. Now, let's just let Mike get there. Can you, okay, thanks. Can you keep it there, Mike? If you go, if you follow Darling Drive south to where it intersects with Forest Edge Drive, that's the, that's the property in question. And then, Mike, are you able to get that other slide up that more specifically shows the setback dimension to the parking lot? That would be the one titled petition number two.
It's in the packet.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. And then this, this, there's the Latin question, uh, in, in orange is where the right-of-way will be, and then, Mike, the second, the next slide. All right, north is up on this picture, and then you could see, uh, you could see the right-of-way in gray to the right, uh, you could see the right-of-way dedication in the parking lot in gray to the lot. And in little red numbers, it says 10.0 feet. And that would be to the backside of the curb or the parking lot.
So that's the, that's the southern leg of the Darling Drive extension, the very south, 200 feet right off of Forest Edge Drive. So the, the guy in question is the parcel to the west. And, you know, now his side yard becomes a front yard because that's a right-of-way.
Mike, can you go back one slide? I think there was a, yeah.
So that, that one's facing east-west, you know, north is to the left there, so it's a little confusing.
Uh, okay.
So that, that's the piece we're bought off of Van Vlissigen. That's a 70-foot, right, soon-to-be right-of-way from Forest Edge Drive heading to our parcel. But that's, that's, you know, no, north is to the left.
Gotcha. Okay, so, so it's basically just a road going through with 10 feet instead of?
Fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
No way to get 50, because is that even 50 feet between there?
Well, it's a, it's a 70-foot piece of property we're buying, and really the curb is 37 feet, so we have 27 feet of green space. Well, it's a 70-foot piece of property we're buying, and really the curb is 37 feet. So we have 27 feet of green space. Then the property, then 10 feet with the guy next door. So it'll look like 37 feet of green space.
Okay.
And then the same trees that are in the right-of-way of the Darling Farm development will be continued through this lot all the way to Forest Edge Drive. So it looks uniform and appropriate.
Right. The landscape plan shows that, and it'll look very uniform, exactly. That was like page four, Mike, of the original packet.
All right, that, that's fine for me. Thank you.
Okay.
So we need to vote on that now?
Yeah, this petition two, right?
Yes.
Okay, their motion to approve.
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Hi.
Hi.
Trustee Cook.
Hi.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Hi.
Trustee Markwart. Trustee Oppenheim.
Hi.
Trustee Takaka.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Next is Woodland Chase subdivision request from Icon Building Group to increase the maximum permitted fence height.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could give a brief summary on this if you wish. Specifically, the request is to amend ordinance 2016-049. This is the ordinance that approved the PUD for the Woodland Chase subdivision. The amendment would allow fence heights inside and rear yards to be five feet rather than three feet, which is required by that ordinance. This request is made in response to feedback from residents of the subdivision. Those lots that are adjacent to the large natural area to the south of the development, there's an abundance of wildlife, including coyotes and deer. And the taller fence would help keep animals out of private yards, allowing for safe use for children and pets that reside on those individual lots. I would note that the fence styles would remain the same. One of those styles is shown in front of you right now. That would be a picket. Another approved fence would be a split rail. That would be slide number two, Mike. And then the third slide shows a metal fence. These styles would remain the same. The amendment would simply raise the maximum height from three feet to five feet. So tonight in your deliberations, the county is to determine if the proposed, the proposed amendment would change the concept or attempt at the PUD. If you thought it was substantial and changed the concept or intent, then the request would need to be forwarded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to reopen the public hearing. If the cow feels this change is minor and supports the overall intent of the PUD, then it would be appropriate to direct staff to amend ordinance 2016-049 to increase the maximum fence height from three feet to five feet.
And see Sean Burke, who's shown on your screen, is representing Icon Builders, and he can answer any questions that you have.
You want to turn your mic on, Brett? Is it Brett?
Sean Burke.
Oh, is he?
He's on.
His name appears there.
Where? Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
It's at the bottom of my screen, yeah.
Well, my, my question would be, I, and I talked to Mike Atkinson earlier today about this. I don't see the need to do it on any other lots than the ones that, if we do it at all. Only the lots that back up to the heavily wooded area rather than throughout the whole development. There's really no reason to do it throughout the whole development, I don't think.
Are you able to hear me now?
Whoa.
Ooh, and stereo. And Dolby. Dolby surround sound.
Reverb.
Reverb.
There's 51 homes.
I ain't working.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay. There's 51 home sites throughout the community. There's open space along the west as well as the majority of the southern property line. However, there is open space in the center of the community. And one of the things that we're, we're seeing evidence of is Mother Nature coming directly from the, the south heading north, but also from the west side, our neighbors next door, the cemetery has an open access point all through the community, and they are gathering in the center of the community.
Well, you've already got a very large fence to the west that apparently isn't doing, you know, I, I, I just don't want to see that become everything over there totally fenced in.
For discussion, trustee Cook, the lots in question that are immediately adjacent to the wooded area are lots number six through, certainly through 15, and then more questionably through lot 18. Those are the lots specifically that abut the large natural area.
What would we be proposing to do where there's the path going around the detention pond? We can't really fence that off, can we?
No, this, this would be actually on the, the residence property line. So it would not be in any of the open space areas. The existing fence that was put in within the community exists behind our most southerly lots towards the east of the property. So it's only four lots there. That was more as a neighboring fence to the adjacent homestead there to kind of give them some additional privacy along with the trees there. And along the roadways between Buffalo Grove Road and Route 45, the rest of it would, what we were looking for is already approved is a three-foot fence, which is very uncommon. And other than smaller dogs and, and smaller children, the worry is not so much keeping them as it's also keeping out any of the additional wildlife in the area in, that's going into their rear yards.
Well, the three-foot, I'm correct, something, the three-foot is not that uncommon because Centennial Crossing, right across the street, is all three-foot max, correct?
That's correct, trustee Cook. The PUD approving that subdivision allows three-foot fences.
So what kind of wildlife are you referring to? I heard coyotes mentioned, but with the split fence that, that we saw, I don't think that's stopping anything. And certainly coyotes can get over five feet anyway.
That's, we were just inconsistent with the styles of the fence that were already permitted. We can specify one of the three that are already approved at a three-foot. We have no, it was just inconsistent with the original PUD as far as the styles go.
As CB ditch becomes Indian Creek at that juncture there behind those properties, that's a waterway that has fresh running water and along the golf course and along the homes that abut the CB ditch, there is a, an abundance of deer. There's a number of homeowners in the Hawthorne Club subdivision that continuously complain about the deer eating their vegetable gardens and flowers, things of that nature. But deer can infect, just in a single bound, clarify foot fence.
Yeah.
So I, I'm.
As can coyotes.
Maybe, yeah. I'm not as familiar with coyotes.
Eight feet.
Eight feet for coyotes? Yeah, I knew it was pretty high.
Well, the deer are even higher, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm kind of with trustee Cook on this. I, I hate to see that become this giant Walden fortress there. The original Fort Dearborn or whatever.
The additional, or the, the, the fences in style are all the open style fences in design versus what the, the existing fence is, a board-on-board fence that is around the, the homes that abut Route 45 and Buffalo Grove. More, more for breaking down of the sound and, and visual circumstances on those roadways. But in these particular cases, they're commonly used for areas to not obstruct views and still get that safety factor for each resident.
Are these lots already sold?
The concern has come from homes that have been sold. They're well aware of the requirements. They have spoken with staff in asking for their support and looking for an alteration. It's not uncommon that people ask that when they're coming into a new community.
Okay, so it's not like preventing the development from selling these lots, right? They're not saying, well, if we can't.
And, and they were aware of it coming in, correct? So caveat empty applies.
100%.
Well, I would say if, if these lots are sold and people are there and they've got a legitimate concern about safety, I'd, I'd want them to come to a meeting and, you know, express their concerns because I have to agree with trustee Cook and Schultz on this. Unless it's a detriment in some way from selling or the residents, I'd like to hear from the residents.
And, and to keep your animals in, there's electronic fences. I mean, that's, a lot of people use those now. My son's getting one installed for his dog.
Understood. I'm imagining you will hear from some of them, but like I said, we've indicated that prior to their purchasing, it's more of a request. And I, I guess maybe when you said whether or not you lose sales over them, it's yet to be determined whether or not that has occurred. But, you know, if someone's looking for the ability to place a fence in with a larger height, you know, that, that is definitely feasible that you could lose a sale over that.
Well, can I ask you a question? What if we went with the one-style fence?
100% agreeable to that. I, in, in most cases, in this particular circumstance, when there's an aversion to a fence or lessening the open space, open feel look, the aluminum, black aluminum fence has always been the go-to. And it seems to meet everyone's kind of desires.
I would agree with that. I would have less of an issue if it was the aluminum one.
Have no problem with that.
There would be five, up to five feet high.
Yes, sir.
Well, I, you know, the, the metal fence, while it's very, very attractive, what are they trying to accomplish? Because we've already said here, you're not going to keep out deer and coyotes with a five-foot-high fence. You know, are they looking for privacy? Well, then the metal fence doesn't provide that.
It is, it's not, it's not a function of privacy because then I, I, it, it's more of a function of what their dogs could stay within, their, the potential of what the maximum a deer can jump or doesn't mean that they, a coyote, doesn't mean they're all going to attempt to jump that. It's a unique scenario if they're going to go seven, eight feet, but I'm sure it happens. I'm sure that's the extreme. It's going to deter the majority from trying to get within that yard versus right now, they're strolling in and walking in. And if you have an electronic fence, such as I do, and I'm against a, a natural preserve, it, it's, it's dangerous and it's, it's mind-wracking at, in the evening when you can't see and your pet's out there. So you're putting yourself in harm's danger to protect a, a little pug. It, it's one of those things that, you know, puts people's minds more at ease and they feel more protected. It's not a function of privacy.
Do we have any pictures of the exist, are there existing fences and what lots six through 18? Are there some already?
No, sir. There, there, there's a wood fence that goes from approximately lot one to approximately lot six. And then the rest is back, backs up to the woods.
And that's a picket fence?
It was a cedar board-on-board fence.
Okay.
And that was six foot in height.
Yeah. But I, I can understand the people want to still preserve the view, right?
Oh, 100%. Yeah, I mean, it's magnificent back there.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if we got a consensus on this one yet, you know.
Yeah, I think we're just giving a false sense of security if, if people think that they're protecting their dogs from coyotes because it's nowhere near close enough. So I was just looking at another website. It says coyotes easily jump six-feet fences, easily. So, so people, if people are going to leave their dogs out thinking that, oh, well, it's a five-foot fence, no one's gonna, you know, no coyote's gonna jump it, they're more likely to lose that dog than if it's three feet and they, and they're worried about it because they, they recognize that it's even easier. So I'm, I'm just not sure if we're, we're really helping at all. If they were asking for an eight-foot fence, that might be different, but that's a different matter altogether.
Plus, Dave alluded to the fact that, you know, there's a passageway or pathway that is wide open still too, right?
Right. But in, in essence, if you would think about it, the, that pathway, which would be the arterial route for travel, they're going to be least likely to head towards a fence and try to take the fence on versus walking through the open space area that is between the homes and the wetland area adjacent from the homes. And again, I don't feel it's falsified sense of security. I feel that's enhanced sense of security versus what's there currently today.
You know, to clarify, these, this is an icon that would be putting the fence up. This just changes the regulations that would have to be followed by the individual property owners. But so it would all, always be on the individual lots. It wouldn't block a path or anything like that.
So how many lots are yet to be developed?
Well, sold, you mean? Because all the lots are developed currently, you know, ready to be built on. There's 18 homes that have been sold in, out of the 51.
Okay, because some of the homes are up.
Correct, correct. There's, out of the 18, there's 15 probably occupied, 14 occupied. So out of the 14, there's three individuals that I know would like to have a difference in the fence. Have requested us to present to the board for them since we're the builder and, you know, to assist them in this process. Otherwise, yes, I'm sure you'll hear from them separately.
Sean, do they all back up to the forested area?
No.
All three of them?
No, the one, one in particular is abuts the open space within the center to the natural grove that's in the center of the community. And two of the others do abut that, one almost directly behind the second home in from the pond and the, the wetland finger that provides access through there. And then another one, a couple houses down to the east, but still has, abuts the woods. Wetland area.
Well, is this something we want to put ahead in the P and Z's agenda? And let the people come in and? Is through?
Yeah, well, the board can.
Yeah, well, the board can, you can send it to P and Z. You could, we could table it, and we could bring it back to the board with residents, which is what I would recommend.
That's what I think we should do.
And then we would, then the board would hear directly from the residents, and we can go from there.
I don't have a problem with P and Z. I mean, they are experts in land use and the, you know, development concept and things of that nature. They're closer to that. I kind of like that.
But that's so technical because to me, it would be keeping in little, it would prevent little kids from climbing a three-foot fence and getting out. See, that's, that would be my pitch to the board if I had a house there. It wouldn't necessarily be a coyote because if there's a lot of deer running around or if your dog's running around late at night, that's why a coyote's going to come in your yard. He's not just going to come in your yard for the sake of it. But if you have little kids, I understand a three-foot fence or even that, you know, that split fence, kids can crawl right through and they can get out of the yard. So I would like to hear from the residents. And you know what? If they're passionate enough and strong enough, then, you know, I don't see a problem with it, but...
But do we then go back and look at Centennial Crossing and...
Yeah, I know, but I don't think... You know what? Did anyone in Centennial Crossing ever complain about having, wanting a higher, a five-foot fence?
I have not received a complaint.
Right, exactly. So if they have a problem, let them come to the board, and I would like to hear it. And you know what? If they're passionate enough about it, I have no problem with it personally.
Is that something that you would like me to have, sign a petition?
No, come to the board.
Rather than come to a board meeting?
Come to a meeting and, you know, say, hey, here's why I would like to be able to, at my own expense, build a higher fence.
Okay, so Sean, I mean, if there's a concurrence from the board, and that's a question mark. But if there is one, then we could table the matter, maybe a motion to table the matter. Then Sean, we rely on you to organize the residents. I'm happy to talk to them as well. And once we can choose the date when all the residents can make it, we can schedule them to go before the board. The board then could listen to the residents, and the board could either direct it back to P and Z, or they could approve it or deny it. Just throwing that out there for consideration. So we get the residents and put them back in front of you? That works for me, and if...
Yeah, if that'll get this moving, I mean, why not, you know?
Motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt. Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. The only other item is to adjourn. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Second.
Motion is second. Those all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Yeah, we have it. The meetings, committee, the whole meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
So then we're going to, at a future date, decide what we're going to do about the next meeting then, after we see what the governor's guidelines are?
Yeah.
Correct. I will send you an email, let you know what the governor's guidelines are, and just solicit your input.
Well, can we just say in concept that we're all in agreement that as long as we, and I looked up the rules as did Mr. Farolo. It seems like there is not a requirement to wear masks as long as you're able to be six feet apart. So if we're all in agreement, then I guess we don't need to have you go through that process unless, unless something else comes about.
Okay, if anything changes, we will meet here as a board on the 7th.
Okay.
Without masks.
Without masks.
We should at least bring one.
Yeah.
Come in the building.
Okay, well, the committee, the whole is adjourned, so...
Good night. Good night.
Good night. Have a pleasant tomorrow.